I have six o'clock. Town trustees board of meeting, trailer meeting, January 11th, 2024, town hall, council room at 6:00 P.M. Number one, call to order, roll call please.
Randy.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Dave.
Here.
Report from the town of Hennessy, A.D., H.O.C. agencies.
So we changed this from Hennessy United to Ad hoc agencies. So that way we can include Hennessy United, the Discover Hennessy, you know, and any like library board if they want to do anything, or the historical society, Roundup Club, anybody wants to come in that's associated with the town of Hennessy, then we could put it into there and we wouldn't have to just add them to the agenda.
That sounds very good. I like that idea.
But that's why we.
Any report from any of those people?
Oh, I got, well, the pavilion's stuck now because of, the pad was too wet to work on, and now it's too cold to work on. And I have a lead on getting a hundred by one hundred foot concrete pad built for it. So I'm working on trying to get that.
That would be wonderful.
Without any cost to the city.
That would be wonderful. That would be fantastic. That would be great. I'm off for that. I like the price, too.
That's awesome.
Number three, consider approval for the consent agenda. A, minutes of December meeting. B, approval of the claims as follows. December purchase orders, $2,045.80. January purchase orders, $39,526.89. January restricted fund, $20,067.09. January library fund is zero. January streets and alley fund is $119.63. C, accept the following reports, library, police, treasurer, and fire. I move to accept the consent agenda. Second. Roll call please.
Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Citizen comments? Not at this time, okay. Number five, town administrative report. Purchases and new employees, please.
Um, there was no purchases. We do have two new employees for town hall. Very, very excited about them. They're helping out a lot. They're learning on, coming, learning quickly. But other than that, my report is in your package.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some questions. You want me to ask them now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll make it quick. Tiffany, you're going to know the answer to all these very quickly, I'm sure. Records clerk, have you made any progress assigning someone to be our records clerk that is involved with people walking in for records requests?
Um, right now I'm speaking with the attorney to try to figure out who's actually supposed to be doing that, and so with the wording of the state statutes. So that will be only due February.
Okay, yeah. That, that makes sense because to me, the way I read the state law, it looks like it's a, an extra duty for somebody that's already in the office.
Um, some of it is and some of it's not.
Okay, alright.
So that's why we're trying to get clarification.
So we'll get more clarification in February?
Yes.
Okay. I, I understand that we're still going to be working our codes review. I had several questions on that tonight, but Ben's, we're going to work them. I'll hold my questions until those workshops.
Okay.
Okay. And if you remember, I asked you to have some workshops with, with me and make it available to everybody else on the CIC database. Do you remember that?
Yes.
You asked me if, you said that you wanted to do the codes review workshops first, and our suspense on the codes was the second of January. So I'm a little bit.
Actually, it's moved to February because of all the holidays.
Okay.
And we were short-staffed and all of that.
I'm a little bit confused going, I really didn't want to push out the CIC stuff as far as, it looks like we're going to push it out. So here's my question. I know you're going to be on vacation next week.
February.
The following week?
No, it's February 12th through the 7th.
Did I read that wrong? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. That even enhances my question a little more. I want to do some CIC stuff with you next week.
You can come in anytime.
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 And I can interrupt you no matter what you're doing?
Well, unless I'm in a meeting with my door closed, but, or you can email me, text me and say, hey, are you available?
Okay, alright, okay. Again, just remember that, you know, I can meet with you on the CIC stuff. That's ideal for me, but I want to make sure these guys.
They're more than welcome to come in at any time, too.
Okay. I want you to know, and I'm, I've got this on here based on, I think if you were going to be out next week, I want you to know I'm getting ready to come in with some records requests. And I was going to tell you about it tonight because I don't want you to think that I'm trying to slip in, you know, with you on vacation. But you being here next week, that helps me. I also want to know if we have any info requests since our last meeting, our last regular meeting by the state auditors?
There was some requests that went to the clerk.
I saw those.
Okay, that's, that's the last one.
That's all we've had?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and Kelly, you got that information into the auditors?
Oh, um, yeah, except for, I had emailed all of you. I think it was a copy of what I was missing. And I had text Katie to ask her for help, and I haven't heard anything from her.
So we have not got that stuff into the.
Not all of it.
Okay.
I got most of it, but the ones I was missing, I needed help with.
Okay. Strongly recommend somebody communicate with the audit team on that.
Well, I, of course, I copied all of you on the email that I sent him, and I told him that I had reached out.
Yeah.
To the previous clerk and have not.
What I'm worried about is them getting to the point where they just document that as a non-response. That's what I'm worried about. That has, you know.
Usually, usually Mr. Memorial Lee, he reaches back out going, you know, once he's reviewed what he's gotten and he needs more, usually he'll reach out while we're still looking and he'll reach out and let.
You know, I have noticed that he seems to be a very pleasant man.
Yes.
He has a, he's very pleasant in dealing with you guys on some of those things you copied me on. Okay. Thank you very much, Cliff. Ladies, that's all I've got for right now.
While we have your administration report, I just want everybody to know that we talked about doing the water drip this weekend when it's going to be so cold.
It'll be on the H.A.A. agenda.
Oh, excuse me?
That's okay.
I did notice that far. Okay. Number six, other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action against the following. A, discussion of possible action to review and approve the job description for the town of Hennessy Street Superintendent. You'll find that in your package.
I haven't heard any feedback from anyone. I mean, if you come in and we talk a little bit, and, but other than that, I haven't heard anything from anybody else, so.
May I, Cliff?
Yes.
Cliff, it's right, right there in your hand.
It's on the back.
It's like that.
It's on the backside of the gentleman's report.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Okay. I have a lot of inputs. But I didn't, I didn't hear back. Go ahead.
Can I ask that when you guys have inputs that you come and speak to me prior to the meeting so that way we can kind of maybe get some, you know, because this is in draft, so we can always change it.
Yeah, I know. So, I'm, I'm trying to word this correctly. Earlier in the week, I, I didn't think you had any job descriptions for our superintendents.
This is the first one that I've done.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Because we need to advertise and we need a job description before we hire.
I got it. I got it. I totally agree with that. So, you wrote this? Okay. I, I'm here, because what I would have done is I would have went to some of my other colleagues in other towns.
That is.
And I would have got some job descriptions.
I did.
Okay, alright.
Yes, that's how I came up with this one.
Okay, I got it, I got it. So, but I've got, I've got a lot of stuff on this thing. I can, I don't, you know, if you guys want to, here's, here's what, here's what I want to do. Here's what I would want to do if, if I was in charge of this. I would want to look at the job descriptions that are under that person's supervision. And then I'm going to take your job description or your contract, and then I'm going to word this to where it fits in between those sets of documents. Does that make sense?
I understand.
Okay, alright. So, and when I went through that, that's the mentality that I had, having not seen any job descriptions on any of the employees in the water department. So my question is, number one, we don't have any employees in the water department.
Hold on, we're not, this is street.
I mean, I'm sorry, streets, yeah. I, I, let me, let me, I messed that up. We don't have any employees in the street department currently other than Troy, is that correct?
No, we have the boys, and they're all floating between the streets, the parks, and the cemetery.
Okay, so they're not technically assigned to a department?
Correct.
Okay, so.
What I'm trying to do is I'm trying, right now I have all my managers writing up job descriptions for their employees.
Okay.
So that way we can, I can get them, and then I'm working on theirs, and then we're going to get them all to mesh. I just need somebody to bring in here with a job description for the street department so we don't have a big lapse, and they will be able to help me develop kind of the job descriptions that they perceive. I don't want to come in and come up with a job description, and we hire a superintendent, and then they're like totally.
Okay. So, for brevity's purposes tonight in this meeting, is it okay if I just get these to you tomorrow?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, what we're approving tonight is a draft, am I right or am I wrong?
This is a draft, yes. And so, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, Troy's last day is the 26th.
Yeah.
And I want to get an advertisement out, but.
Sure. Are you going to do that tomorrow?
Not tomorrow, I have a, my uncle's funeral's.
You have a funeral tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so I can't, I won't be able to see you about this.
I won't be here tomorrow, no.
Alright, so. Okay.
One, do you have to have that out, Tiffany? If his life stays at 25?
Well, I just don't want to, I want to be able to search for someone that's going to fit.
So there will be a lapse?
Yes, there will be a lapse.
You're not intending on having somebody here before he's gone?
Only if we're lucky. Only if we're lucky.
I got to ask, how did we get into the situation where we have no job descriptions?
Um, there's never been any job descriptions.
Okay. Alright. I would like to possibly have more conversation with you on that in the future concerning appraisals and stuff like that. So, okay, I'm done, Cliff.
One thing I want to ask about this is, what type of pay are you, do you have some sort of, because with these credentials, this looks pretty good to me. I mean, this isn't somebody just walking off the street, hey, I want to be the streets guy. This is somebody with experience and, and education and.
Right now, it sits in our managers', you know, on the pay scale. But when we get into the experience, I mean, to me, I think sometimes we need to go, I may have to bring it before you guys and say, hey, you know, I found somebody who has, say, 20 years of street department experience as, you know, a manager or something like that. I mean, can we not just give them a little extra?
That's what I want.
Or maybe, you know, we're hiring for the librarian and we find somebody who has a master's degree. You know, I think college degrees and stuff like that should allow us to go up a little bit higher than what our starting pay is. So there's situations like that.
I don't want to say anything bad about the people that we have. We have a really good crew and they do a really good job, but I just want to, you know.
Cliff, I got one more if you don't mind.
Okay.
And actually, actually, this question is for us, not Tiffany. Why aren't we hiring a public works director and let that person hire department supervisors? You see where I'm going? Because we have discussed, and I think we've actually approved hiring a public works director. So my question to us on the board, not to Tiffany, is why are we not hiring a public works director and getting that person at least involved in hiring his or her subordinates? Okay? So, what do you think? Am I wrong on that, or?
We did approve that, yes, we did.
So.
Did you approve it or did you approve a job, a job description? Because as far as I know, there was never an approval for the actual ticket to hire that person.
Well, I thought it had been announced at least once and nobody put in for it. So.
I think we approved the job description.
Yeah, okay. I think I corrected. I personally don't feel like it's needed or necessary. I feel like the job description we've got here on the street superintendent, if we follow through and have good job descriptions on all of our supervisors and managers, I feel like Tiffany's position as town administrator is to be in charge of all the departments. And I don't, I don't see, I don't see putting somebody between her and what the, what the current department heads are doing.
Well, I, to be honest with you, I understand your point, I understand your position. I thought we'd already decided that we were going to hire a public works director. I, I'm not saying that we approved it for the job announcement. I thought we did, but my brain is sometimes clogged. As I remember, some of the town employees actually talking to me about that position. So, I guess I need to look back at some of our town meeting minutes, huh? Okay.
Okay. But we need to get back to our agenda. And we're talking about the superintendent. This description for the town superintendent.
I will say, though, if we have a lot of chiefs and not enough Indians, then we're not going to be able to pay our people as well because we're going to be spending a lot more money in.
Management.
Management positions.
And maybe we don't need a street department superintendent either. There's no employees, again, I'm saying I don't see any employees working in the street department other than Troy. Tell me I'm wrong.
Um, we have guys going out and filling alleyways and filling potholes, and it's not just Troy.
Is there any records on that work? Because I struggle to find that work being done in town. I'll look for it, too.
Um, when they do do it, they put, a lot of times they notate on their time card exactly what they did that day.
Okay. So if I want to see some time cards, are you guys going to tell me they're confidential?
No, they don't have any type of confidential information on them.
Okay. And the, while we're on, while I'm talking about that, this is on topic in my opinion, Cliff. I'm talking about confidential information. You do know that town board members can see confidential information, right? And they are responsible for not allowing that information to be let out?
You can't take it out without.
That's correct.
The city hall.
Yeah, I can look at it all I want. Okay, just want to make sure.
Just not medical.
Say it again.
Not medical.
Not medical?
Uh-uh. It's tied to your H.R. person and the supervisor. Anything medical.
Anything medical. So you guys maintain medical records up here on our employees?
Um, some, yes, we do.
Okay, alright. Okay, just want to clarify that because we've had the state auditors in here briefing what we can and can't see.
Well, and I was told before I came, came back that stuff was given out to board members with social security numbers on it, dates of birth, different things, and to me, that's a big no-no. Like, because then you guys take it outside of city hall, and you guys are totally responsible for the reports that you have that have that information on there.
I don't think we can take anything out of this.
Not supposed to.
You told, you told about any confidential information.
Yeah, like social security numbers and.
Well, I could live with that, but I can't live with people telling me that things are confidential and I can't see them.
What was confidential and couldn't see?
Now, that's kind of off the agenda. If you want to talk about it some more, I will.
Well, you brought it up and said it was on topic. So why is it now not on the agenda?
Well, Bert, you worked the problem with me. Payroll records. You remember back in the summer when we worked the payroll records deal?
Yeah.
I was told those were confidential, I couldn't see them. That's why you came in and helped me get those, get that data.
Okay, but we got them, I mean.
Yeah, but I didn't, me and you did. It took you to butt in and help me. That's all I got on it. There's no use in us arguing about it. Okay? You know what I'm talking about, Shelley. Thanks, Cliff. I'm done with it.
So do we need to have some more discussion on this, or do we want, need to table this for right now? But we haven't, what do we want to do with the superintendent's street?
I would say we table it, because David's got some stuff he needs to come in and talk to me about.
Okay, I can do that. We're going to table eight in the discussion.
And I do ask if anybody else has anything, please come to me.
B is discussion with possible action to accept the FY '24 REAP grant in the amount of $160,000 for Mitchell Road water line size increase and replacement. Has that, have they approved that?
Yes. We have the, in your package is the actual REAP grant award of $160,000.
Yeah, I've seen that. Do we have an engineer's estimate on what that whole project? I think we did at one time, didn't we?
We did, I don't have it in here with me.
Do you remember approximately what it was?
Um, we're going to be hitting in about $200,000, $220,000.
Out of like restricted capital outlay or something?
Out of the ARBA money?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Seems like the total thing was like 410?
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure, but I think that was the whole total.
What's up? Sorry, we need to butt in.
Go ahead.
The, the ARBA money we have to, we have to use this year?
We have to allocate it by the end of this year. We have to use it by 2027.
Okay.
Because I know we had this out for $200,000, and they came back and says, hey, can you do that for 160? And we did that, so we have more points going forward with, with more REAP grants. And that gives us some points for our next time.
Once you guys accept this, then we'll, Cliff and Kelly will sign a contract. We'll mail it back in and then our engineer can get started on preparing the bid packets.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the FY '24 REAP grant in amount of $160,000 for Mitchell Road water line size increase and replacement.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Harold. Cliff.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Is this part of the school? It's not on, is it on the west side?
Yes, the water line on, in front of the schools.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Once we do that water line done, and then we'll be able to going forward with the parking?
C, discussion with possible action to approve construction change for cemetery, restroom, storage, and add to entry door on the west side of south end with Dobbs Construction. Says it needs a six pound door with deadbolt doorknob assembly. Labor materials, $850.
The deal is, uh, I'm at the city and Keith out there to look at that project. And with the south end, just with the garage door, if that, there's just a cable goes across that unlocks the door, if that cable were to break, you'd have to break the inside, you'd have to more or less tear the garage door apart to get into that part of the building. So Keith recommends put a door there on that side, south side of that hill on the west wall, so we could go in and out of it instead of.
It ain't be handy to have it anymore. It's a case there. Just going in to get something, then I'll have to raise that over here to door.
I mean, they come along pretty good with that little project, so. He ever give us a timeline when he's going to get done with it?
He's going to be, he is already ordered, well, he's ordering the door, because it is within my spending limits, so, but I wanted you guys to see that. But he is ordering the door and he's going to be working on it next week, because he said he had heat or he's stopping at his work, so.
Do we need a motion then? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the construction change order of $850 to Dobbs Construction to add the door on the restroom storage at the cemetery.
And I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Randy.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
D, discussion with the possible action to approve ordinance 388 adding a charge for damaged or destroyed AMR water meter caps, antenna transmitter wiring parts, and lid and/or automated water meters with a separate vote on the emergency clause. What's happening is we are having damage, damage done to our, maybe damage to, our meters because people are pulling their, let's say, breaking the wires. Some people are accidentally pulling on top of them and breaking the, so they can't read the deals, and so that's what, we came up with this ordinance.
Cliff, I got questions, will you?
Okay.
So, let's use my water meter as an example.
Okay.
It's on my property, on the corner. And I hired a fence put up. My fence company messed up and enclosed my meter inside the fence, which was a permanent violation. I had to move the corner of the fence, which I did. I'm sure it was followed up on by whoever was doing the codes review on it. So here's my question. There's, well, let me say a couple more things. There's a lot of reckless driving in my neighborhood. A lot of teenagers drives through my neighborhood, going to school. They come around Oak Street, turn east on Second Street, go down to Walnut, and turn left to go to the school. A lot of high rates of speed, a lot of noise, a lot of ridiculous, you know what, going on. If they run over my water meter, are you guys going to bill me for it? That's my question.
No, I mean, I wouldn't think so, except.
We have people who, who purposely pull over on them when they're parking in their drive. We have people who are coming in and clipping the wires to our AMRs. We have people using the weed eater and snagging it with weed eaters, lawn mowers, different things, and so that's why this is being.
Okay, I did not know that. People are actually doing it on purpose?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as I don't do it on purpose, I'm not going to get charged.
Because if, in your case, and I, I totally know where you're coming from.
You know right exactly where.
Yeah. If that happened, I would, I'd get police report and make sure they put in their report that the water meter was damaged in the so-called accident. It may not be an accident.
Well, I've got a security camera on it, but my problem is that a lot of them go by so fast you can't even read their license plates. So it's, it's unreal over there where I live. So it's, it's unreal over there where I live.
But, I mean, I've seen where people do those videos and the police are able to identify the vehicles unless they saw it there.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, okay. Well, let me say this. A couple of years ago, Hank Weber was still here. Somebody cut that corner and somehow they missed that large elm tree and they knocked down the street sign. And I want to say the stock sign got replaced, but the Oak Street sign never got replaced. And it's still not replaced today. So that's an example of what I'm talking about. That's why I'm saying this, is people cut that corner. Teenagers cut the corner with, with, uh, electric motorcycles and minibikes. And, and so there's a lot of traffic that actually cuts the corner in my yard. And, uh, so I'm kind of defensive about this, but...
If they hit your water meter, they're probably going to take out your fence, right?
Uh, yeah, probably. Yeah, yeah. I, I just barely met the requirements on the permit for my clearance after I had to take that corner in. It cost me a lot of money too, by the way.
They shouldn't.
Yeah, they did. They, they charged me. Anyway, okay, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions about this?
Make a motion to approve ordinance three-eight-eight.
Second. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yeah.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
E, discussion with the...
My man.
Oh, we got to do the emergency. I make a motion to do the emergency clause on ordinance three-eight-eight.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Second. Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion with Tiffany on the status of automation board meeting packets.
So I have checked in with our IT people. They are getting me some quotes on some Chromebooks or, um, some type of laptop for our board members to get me pricing. Kelly and I next week are going to do a couple of demos with board docs, which King Fisher uses, and also the OSSBA, Oakland School Board Association, on kind of similar what the school board uses here. And then once we do those demos, then we will come back and we will present you guys with what we feel price-wise and all of that, and let you guys see a demo. And then also I have the IT people looking at Microsoft three-sixty-five, migrating us over to that so we could do shared docs and all of that, so...
Are you not on three-sixty-five now? I think that'll be a good addition to three-sixty-five, in my opinion. I use it, but mine, mine's just, I can put five computers on it, but I'm sure that's...
Yeah, um, so we have a net, a, uh, like on our server farm, we have a shared drive that all of us can access from our computers through, through CIC. And so that's how we use, we share a lot of documents like that. And so, but the three-sixty-five will allow us, um, tell them why to be able to share documents and not just people that are on the server farm.
How big is the screen?
Um, I, I'm linking more at like the fourteen inch versus the eleven inch because I figure you guys would be able to.
I, I don't see very well. I don't know what kind of school that is. Got it out there. Pretty nice. I think that'll be very helpful.
I do too, because we'll get rid of the paper. And then once we, I mean, and with these board docs and different things, I talked to Brittany and King Fisher. In fact, the twelfth at five-thirty, if anybody wants to go down there and watch their meeting, it's February twelfth at five-thirty. I will be gone on vacation, but she's going to come and also kind of show me a different, different things about it. But we'll be able to, like, we come up with an agenda item. Say there's something that comes up tomorrow and I'm like, oh, I want to put that on February's agenda. I can put that out there, or you guys would be able to put that out there for Kelly, and then everybody else would already be able to see what's building on the agenda. And then any documents as they come along too can be added and you'd be able to see those.
I think that'd be very, very helpful. I like that idea. F, a discussion of possible action to accept a quick claim deed donation from Richard Seminac Revocable Trust for eleven undeveloped lot, undeveloped lots within the Thompson Edition Block Thirty-Six Lots Twenty-three through Thirty-three, physically located at the one-one-five West Second Street valued at seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars. I would hope to see it be...
He was getting geared up for the quarter. He is in town. He's signed the deed today, um, but...
He may be getting ready to leave, but...
Well, I asked him and he said he's just going to, he was getting prepared, yes, to hunker down.
Well, I think we need to let Richard know how much we appreciate his generous donation of those lots because that's going to be, that's going to be awesome.
Well, it completes the package.
It does. Absolutely.
A lot to work with.
I got the motion here, guys, if you're done.
Go ahead.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to accept a quick claim deed donation from the Richard W. Seminac Revocable Trust for eleven undeveloped lots within Thompson's Edition Block Thirty-Six Lots Twenty-three through Thirty-three, physically located at one-fifteen West Second Street, valued at seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You helped us a lot.
Took a long time, but...
Yeah. Thank you, Richard. I know you're watching it. You're watching it.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much, Richard. Discussion with possible action to authorize the mayor, Cliff vote, to sign the donation letter and affidavit for the deed.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the donation letter and affidavit for the deed.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes. New business. Any matters not known for which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting agenda in accordance with section three-one-one-nine title twenty-five OS. Citizens comments?
Jackie, that would be you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a, I have a question. So how's this going to work with working with the school? I mean, so are they familiar? They know that we've already, okay, they know it. Okay. He didn't act like it the other night. Okay.
We talked about it like a few months ago, so... You mean...
On the parking, their parking, their on east.
We've been talking about it for a couple of years to get it repaired.
He and I have, he and I discussed this. You talk about Mr. Turner.
Yeah.
He and I discussed it at school.
Now, and I said the east side, and they talked about the east side, but I was thinking the west side was where you all were going to, really? Where they were going to put all that parking in over there?
Well, you're talking about the west side of Mitchell Road.
Yes, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought...
The, no, west side of Mitchell Road, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that's what you're talking about? Okay. But they were already working on one on the east side. They're going to do, yeah, yeah.
They did not want to do the west side because of our line. They didn't want to...
Right, yeah, okay.
So we're trying to get that done and out of the way.
Just wanted to make sure, because they're doing on the east side. No, no. Yeah, I know. I got you. Sorry.
Probably.
I was doing left and right. You couldn't see it.
Councilperson's report? And David?
I've got a couple of minors here. I've noticed on our agenda tonight that our treasurer's rapport has been dropped off of the agenda. Is, is, uh...
Is it there?
Say it again?
Is it there?
It's on there.
Number three?
Where do I see? Did I miss that?
Library, police, treasurer, fire.
Oh, okay. I missed it. Sorry.
No problem, sir.
I'll pay closer attention. Thank you, Cliff. Uh, I wanted to make another pitch for, uh, trying to get the meeting read-a-heads out a little earlier than, than what we've been doing. It seems like we're, you know, always at the last minute. And I know that it's not Kelly's fault one hundred percent of the time. Number one, is there anything that I can do to help with the read-a-heads? Uh, I've, I've called around and talked to people, other towns and school, some school boards are getting their read-a-heads, and some counties are working their read-a-heads as early as four days for board members ahead of the meeting. Now, I'm not, I'm dumb, but I'm not really super dumb. I realize that if you put read-a-heads out four days early, that there's probably going to be changes and add-ons. But I would at least like to get the information to where I have time to soak it up. And if, and if I need to do any research on records here in Town Hall, I don't want to come in here and ask the ladies that work here that I need instant service on records requests. Because, you know, since I've been on the board, records requests take a while. Does that make sense to everybody? And I'm trying to say this without complaining, so I think four days is reasonable for read-a-heads at probably the ninety, ninety-five percentile complete rate. And then if there's changes, additions, or whatever, I can understand that.
I'm going to say probably a lot of it's my fault.
Okay.
Well, I...
No, go ahead, Cliff. Thank you.
Because I put all the stuff on the agenda and I don't always be able to get here in time, so I want to put the responsibility on me and that's...
Okay, all right. Well...
I will say too, once we get board docs or the other program, once we get that, then it's going to be so much different because as we're adding stuff, stuff will be on there and available to you way far in advance.
Okay.
In real time.
May, maybe, maybe that's going to...
I'm sure it will.
Maybe that's going to make me a little more easier about it and, and, because I don't want to come in here, you know, pulling records out of Town Hall is a workload for the people that work in here.
Correct.
And if I need to see stuff prior to the meeting between getting the read-a-heads and, and the meeting, then I really don't want to come in here and beat them up about it. But that's my thoughts on it, and I really appreciate anything that anybody can do to make it better.
I'll try to do better.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Well, I think like that job description, as soon as I got it out, I got it out like on Monday or Tuesday. Um, I think it was Monday. I got that job description out. Yeah, so, I mean, as I was getting stuff done, I was trying to send it out. The only thing is, is I send it out and then some of it doesn't get, um, you know, I have to make sure I give it to Kelly that this is for the board because a lot of times I'll just send her everything, um, all at one time. And so it's, I mean, to me, that's going to be confusing to make sure she catches everything that I sent her. So it's...
But like you said, when we get on Chromebooks, it's going to be a lot easier because we can have that one thing at a time instead of having a, 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 but yes, and I understand that too because, you know, you know, struggling with stuff, so...
Yeah, thank you, Cliff.
I have a question for you, David.
Yes, sir.
The records requests and stuff that, that you're referring to, how far approximately, how far back time-wise are you? I mean, or can you put a time on it? I mean, you want to see stuff five years old or just three or four years old?
I might, I might want to see records on, on, on an issue that's on the agenda. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about...
Reason, reason I ask, I wonder when we got all this done, of course, we can't, if a lot of that, like past minutes or whatever, couldn't be scanned and put into documents on these to where...
The agenda's in there. It should be on the website.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, we've talked about...
But I mean even other stuff like purchase orders or whatever, whatever kind of documents we're looking for. A reason I, I bought a scanner at work that's, you can put in both sides just quick. And we put all of the funeral records from nineteen thirteen to present. Probably took six or eight months, but that was working on it part-time.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm asking of, and then he could just click in and see what's your...
Well, I know, I know that we have state laws that govern how many years that certain records are supposed to be on file.
Eight minutes or forever, aren't they?
I, uh, you know, I've, I've, in the past, I suggested that we possibly get a couple of interns from the high school to help us do that scanning that Bert is talking about. I would, uh, even volunteer to help do some of that myself.
Well, like, right now, all of, for the past three years, four years, all of our invoices and purchase orders and all of that, that's been scanned in and attached to each individual invoice on our computer system.
Okay, that's in the CIC database. See, that's an example of what I want to see with you when we talk about this. Okay. And see, that might even...
And we're scanning, um, all the customers, um, when they come and they apply for water service, all of that's attached to their account now in the CIC system. If we do meter changes, we'll attach a scanned copy of that. I mean, a lot of the stuff we are starting to automate because I'm tired of paper.
Yeah, absolutely. I strongly recommend a couple of interns out of the high school. Please consider that. If you can, can they, you know, is it against the rules for them to get in the CIC database?
Um, right now, we're caught up with, we're caught up with all of that.
Okay, right.
So once we find out what else needs to be scanned, I mean...
Sounds like things are getting better.
Well, I'm thinking just even like purchase orders and things that could go on a database and...
Well, once we get the shared docs and stuff like that, when we attach it to the invoice, we can also scan it in and save it to a place in like, for like January invoices, that's a shared doc that's everybody, so that everybody would be able to see it. So it's not going to be add any, any more time or effort.
That sounds cool.
You got it, Harold?
I don't know.
And Bert?
No, I'm done.
Ready?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, please.
All right, Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Hennessy Board of Utilities Trustees regular meeting, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, Town Hall Council Room. Call or order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Consider approval of the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes of the December meeting. B, approval of the claims as follows. Number one, December purchase orders, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. January purchase orders, sixty-two thousand five ninety-one twenty-three. January meter deposits is zero.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the Hennessy Utilities Authority.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yep.
Citizen comments? Other scheduled business. Discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discussion of the...
A, discussion of the possible action to accept the FY24 REIT grant in the amount of $160,000 for Mitchell Road water line size increase and replacement.
I make a motion to accept FY24 REIT grant in the amount of $160,000 for the Mitchell Road water size increase and replacement.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Did he answer?
Yes.
Okay. Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
B, discussion of possible action to approve adding charge for damage, destroyed AMR water meter caps, antennas, transmitters, wiring, parts, and/or lid or automated meters.
Isn't that on our ordinance, the ordinance we just?
The ordinance only has to be approved by the town board and then we're just, because that isn't the utilities charge.
Oh, okay. But we're not approving the ordinance on this?
No, we got it on the town board.
Right. Okay.
I guess you're just okaying the charges.
Approving. Okay.
We gotta make motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the adding charge for damage or destroyed AMR water meter caps, antenna transmitter, wiring, parts, or lid or automatic, automated water meters.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
C, discussion of possible action to approve or draft a policy to encourage citizens to drip water during the extended days of sub-zero freezing temperatures.
So I put this on there and I was waiting for a response back to get my colleagues' information on this. And the information I got back from them is you take a dripping faucet of one second per, or one drip per second, will only use 3,000 gallons a year. So you divide that by 365, you're talking about eight gallons a day. So say you're in a sub-freezing temperatures for five days, you're only talking about 40 gallons. Where we bill by the thousand, we're talking, I mean, cents. We're not even talking dollars, we're talking cents, if somebody drips their faucet. So most of the other municipalities are going with, they're encouraging it, but they're not doing any type of policy to give them any type of credit. I wanted to, like, because if a person's pipes freeze up, it would be a lot cheaper for them to pay the cents versus hundreds of dollars for broken pipes.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm bringing this to you guys, 'cause I know last year we had a, about an 11-day, you know, sub, sub-freezing temperatures last year, and we went ahead and we adjusted them to their normal usage. But I want you guys to direct me if you guys want me to draft a policy, if you, what's your guys' stance on it?
I would like to have people drip their faucets because it could save us money because we don't have to go out and, you know, with, with the faucets dripping, we will be, water will be moving through our system, so it'll be able to, you know.
I talked to Alyssa about that. She said we've always got water moving through our system. And so the only part that would probably, where we would, is that the meter actually got froze up and busted, which we did have a couple of those last year.
Right. I, I think it's important, I'm glad you put that out there, what, what the costs would be, 'cause I don't want someone on a fixed income sitting at home thinking, I don't wanna spend the money to drip my faucet, and then have a break and have to pay hundreds of dollars to repair, if not maybe thousands, I don't know, but, so I think that's important, I'm glad you did that, because if somebody, even if it's $5, they're cold spelled, that's, that's nothing compared to what.
And I have some articles that I'm gonna give, send to Barb and Jack, and I'll forward it on to you guys, where they sent me the actual articles that show, like, how much water is used for a drip per second, and then also information about dripping during sub-freezing temperatures.
I think that'd be very good information to have, yes.
Probably need to start promoting that, like, in the morning.
Before I leave here, I'll forward it.
Okay.
Well, I stopped and got gas before I came, so. So do we want to just go with the information?
I think so, I think so.
Yeah, I don't, Cliff, in my opinion, I didn't mean to talk over you, sir, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say in my opinion that we just let people know that it's only gonna be a few cents, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think if we try to codify this, we're gonna get a lot of resistance. I think if we do it as a policy or a resolution, that it would be much better. That's my opinion. I, I agree with what, what Tiffany's telling us that what we need to do as a town organization. I agree with it, I sure do. I just don't think, you know, American people don't like to be told what to do.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, that's why I didn't say, so, an ordinance, a policy.
Right.
I think she was concerned giving them a credit if they did it.
Yeah.
But I can see that being a nightmare.
Yeah, a nightmare on bookkeeping.
Yeah, a thousand people are gonna be in here saying, hey, I dripped my faucet, I want my credit.
Yeah, 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 how are you gonna prove that? But I would say, you know, and I've been studying on resolutions, that's why I'm saying this, I guess. Something like this could be taken care of with a resolution instead of codifying. And then Tiffany could, you know, announce it and re-announce it and re-announce it as needed in the papers and on Facebook and whatever. That's my two cents, I'm done.
So if you would do that, and if you could do that for us also, I appreciate it, thank you. New business, any matter not known for which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting in the agenda in accordance with the Section 311-9 Title 25OS. Citizen comments? Councilperson's report. Anybody need to say anything else? If not, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.